This very spot here was part of a plantation. John Lane Hooks, who founded Union Town just to my right of my way, Anthony Block, the Frederick Douglass home, which was named Cedar Hill by Frederick Douglass, but it was originally owned by John Lane Hooks, a largest slave owner in Washington DC. I think it's important for us to know that because when we look at history and how history is so often as relates to African Americans, it's shrouded and ambiguity is not totally ignored and eliminated. It speaks to the process of gentrification that we're faced with even now. As we look at our theme for tonight, this most important coming together, it is Council for On Racism, Gentrification, and Displacement, our candidates here before us coming to the banana, Mr. Joe.
Mr. Gigi Burdeman. Ms. Portis Colvin. Reverend Rayland Haggler. Calvin Miller. Rob Rollins. Lisa Silverman. And as I say, Reverend, when we talk about gentrification in this city, we talk about not only the displacement of thousands and thousands of black and brown people, but we also talk about the eradication of history and culture. When we talk about Barre Farms, for example, Barre Farms is a most historic community, which is about to be wiped off the map and wiped out, but has never really been the true history of what Barre Farms was. Barre Farms was a community, the first free community in the District of Columbia. It was also a community where many of the artisans, many of the carpenters and the brick masons who built the White House and the Capitol lived. It was also the home of many abolitionists. It was also a community that, when the money that was left over from acquiring a land from a misfired, houses were built by those freedmen, and money that was left over was used to found Howard University. In fact, it was originally set up indeed to educate the residents of Barre Farms. So that is just a small portion of history of this community. If you came, if you came down where there's a sign that says Old Market House Square, if you know history again, you know that pretty much whatever you saw that word or seen that word, "square," that's where slaves were sold. And of course, when you consider that John Lane Hooks, biggest black slave holder in Washington DC, lived up on Cedar Hill, he had a short walk down the hills to Old Market House Square on 14th U Street, just a couple of blocks from here, to make his sales and deal with what he was faced with. When we talk about racism, it's a subject that most of us operate to even address, particularly this nation. And because it refuses to address it, it's a reason that continues to proliferate to the great degree that it has. Every time an incident comes up, Allah Trayvon Martin, or Michael Brown, or Eric Cahn in New York, or many of them too, the nation's tailwinds are flooding the comments about racism. Only in a very short period, we go back to business as usual. But when we deal with this, we must understand that indeed racism is very much real and alive in this country, and it is something that must be addressed. I would say that what is making it so much more easier for racism not to be addressed is what I call a paradox of progress. When you consider that we have an African American president, many have concluded that it's a so-called post-racial era, and therefore especially in a kind of survival of the fittest mentality, where there's a mentality that says everybody's on equal footing now, and it is okay for suburbanites to come into every area and just take the community. And we see that history repeating itself over and over in this city. If you talk about Georgetown, we know that this was an African American community where blacks were displaced, and then from Georgetown, southwest, and indeed because of the urban removal of so many blacks from southwest over to southeast is why there was such proliferation of apartment dwellers, because as has been the case. And you'll be able to come back, and you'll be able to live here in a little while, just as soon as we do it. In 1990, on the front page of Washingtonian Magazine, the major developer of Georgetown said, and he was at that time himself, about nine years old, he said, "The same thing that is happening in Georgetown is going to happen in southeast and anticoastal." So here we are tonight looking at, and let me just add one more thing to that, there was an article in the 1980, 1960 issue, no, 1981 issue of Ebony Magazine by the renowned historian Leroy Bennett. In that article, he raised the question of, "Will the gains of the 1960s be lost?" And in that article, he went on to talk about and tell all the fact that previous to, and leading up to presidents of the brother of the Hades, there was a black government, there were black mayors, there were black police chiefs, there were black congressmen and members of the House of Representatives, but with one stroke of pen, all of that was erased out. And in a few years, blacks in America were being lynched again, and we moved into the era of Jim Crow. That is all to say that what we look at and things from God to gentrification and racism in this country is about policy. It's about always creating efforts that are put in place, for example, vacant properties being taxed at the rate of five dollars per 100 percent of assessed value, so that many descendants of older longstanding residents of Washington DC have had their parents to make a transition, and not been in positions to immediately do anything about those properties, have had those properties move from, because they are, I wrote, "bigger than $2,000 or so, taxes yearly, to $20,000 a year in taxes." The same for commercial properties, which many of the African American churches have in this city have not, because they do so much ministry in reaching out to the needs of their comrades, not been able to muster funds to develop those properties, so that many properties have been lost in that respect. Having hope for the next strong groundwork for our discussion tonight in historical perspective, again, I want a few to Union Temple Church, and we're gonna get started and get right in. Let me just give you a format of what we're, however, gonna be moving on tonight. All right, so you got that, everybody? Red and green, this summer. All right, okay, here we go. Yes, you do. Do you have some? Okay, all right. Yeah, you can hold some. And in fact, if you hold a red card that says you do not agree with whomever the respondent was, and then you will get a chance to make your decision. Okay, all right, so what we're gonna do is, the first few minutes, we're gonna have you two, our candidates, to do the two-minute statement responding to the following question, and we're gonna go this way down, and the question is this. Two-minute opening and responding to this initial question. I'm on the phone, it's covered. And what in your opinion are the greatest issues affecting low-income black and brown communities in the history? And if you like it, what specifically will you do to support and uplift residents and communities in color? Start at the end here.
Can folks hear me okay? All right, this is about, hi folks, my name is Calvin Fitz, I put my cards here, I'm running for an large spot, on the large spots in the City Council. I just wanna start off in one second. I may have to leave early today, and my wife and I, towards one of my staff members suffered a heart attack yesterday, and so I've gotta, I've been monitoring my phones, and I may have to leave to go see her, so it is, it'd be good that we're in the house of the Lord here, and I will just take two seconds just to have folks just think about her, her name is Sheldon, and hope she's gonna be okay, and whether it's back over or not, she's just gonna be okay, so I'm just taking a second pause. Thank you so much. So with that, the question before us, you know, I've got a lot of, I would say, I would say two, three things. One, I would say jobs. This is something that's inflicted both for this community, whether you're in five, seven, or eight, that our ability not having access to jobs, whether you're talking about starter jobs, minimum wage, whether you're talking about the ability to step up that much, yes, so higher wage jobs, we're gonna talk about opportunities to reboot from jobs to education, and having an unequal system of education, you know Reverend Haggler talked much about this, unequal system of education here, particularly when you talk about schools and public schools here at seven and eight. So jobs, education, and finally, we can talk about housing. Those two things I would work on. One, I am the only person here who ever has a brick and mortar store for waiting jobs here, over 50 jobs, my two businesses provide healthcare and pay sick days. Two, so I don't know I'm making jobs. Second, that's one education, you gotta focus on those little form of schools, and create strong unions, strong unions is now a work with the school board, and those officials to do that. And third, housing, you guys have not only the issue of access to affordable housing, not just affordable housing here, but affordable housing across the city, thank you, affordable housing across the city, in giving those folks the ability to have permanent hire wages, so they can move the ladder from an apartment to papa's condo to a house.
Where's the timekeeper? Did you see him? Everybody know where the timekeeper is, but he holds out the little sign, you'll know that timekeeper's his.
Well, good afternoon, well, good evening, Reverend, the only thing, can't come home again, I think my mother stepped outside for a second, but I started out my life around in a little white house on U Street, and the first school I went to was the school of the street, which I mentioned, back when it was a little less safe, it was there, so it was good to be back on East and the River. My name is Eric Jones, and I started out my campaign as a pope, and I think identified this issue, which is the first job, the leader is to define reality, the last is to say thank you, but all other times, the leader is to serve. Unfortunately, the reality is we've had 11 officials, legislators, and executives who failed to actually give us what we need. They talk about giving you a wage, they talk about giving you a little bit of help. Well, you know what? The only thing about it is that you can give a man a fish, you can eat for a day, you can teach a man how to fish, you can feed his family for a lifetime. What we haven't done is give us the opportunity to actually improve our lives. They haven't given us the grants and the loans to actually start up more businesses in East of the River, especially everyone's five, seven, eight. They haven't given us the opportunity to do more than just earn $10 or $15 an hour, because you know what? We can give you a raise of $15 an hour, but if everyone else in the city is making $20 to $20 an hour, you still can't get housing, you still can't buy a car, you still can't get on transportation, because we don't have the best means in our parts of the city, we still can't do the things we need to do. What we need is someone who understands that real workforce development doesn't mean training every person who's black and brown to work with construction, which is a fast, extreme job. It means we need to stop training all of our young folks to be borrow, listen, teach, and hold things. Let's mandate, they're not just the brothers and sisters, folks, hire our people, but the $100 million a year that goes into solving contracts, computer contracts, architectural contracts. Let's make sure we're training our young folks at McKinley, at H.E. Wilson, at Dunbar House School, for the programs and the jobs of our future. Out of that, I'm praying to mandate that at least one fourth of all workforce dollars spent in this city go to programs that are in the fast and growing fields. And if you fail at doing that, if you don't have a graduation rate, if you don't have success rate, putting our folks in careers that are out of the bound allowance, we're gonna take your rights. Thank you very much.
Well, good evening, everybody. My name is Gigi, my name is Gigi Burdeman, I'm a statehood Green candidate for at-large council, I'm also a resident here of Fort Haight. It's the biggest problem basically, black and brown people in the District of Columbia, probably that they're being driven out of the District of Columbia. I think that's ultimately what it comes down to, all the things that have been discussed so far, is we have an economic model that doesn't work for most people, most working people, most poor people, it's based on really two factors, one, developers, there's only but so much land that exists, they want to use that land to make money, that is their job, and so some people have to go, and ultimately, as we have seen over and over again, they do not wanna put the right affordability in there to keep people in the District of Columbia, because that hurts their profit margin, and this is capitalism, this is business, that's how they operate. And two, the whole other range of businesses, and you know, no disrespect to Mr. Fitz, who has a very outstanding man, but the reality of it is, is the restaurant industry in this city that opposed, you know, wage theft, they opposed being blocked, they opposed a typical wage hike, I mean, ultimately, we have an economic model based on people who benefit off of a low-wage economy and the inability of folks to live here, and one another piece that wants to bring folks in who aren't low-wage people, and has to push folks out. So we have to change our economic model, we do need to raise the minimum wage to $15 an hour, and a lot of people are gonna talk about promoting entrepreneurship, why don't we take the $2 billion and invest in Wall Street banks and stop making them rich, put it in the DC Public Bank, and allow people east of the river to lift themselves up, everyone's for it, and no one wants to put any money there. I'm gonna put the money there, that's what I'm trying to push for. We also need to build affordable housing, it cost us about $4 million to make housing livable for those in public housing now, and to get every single person who's on the waiting list off the waiting list. We can't spend $4 million on that, but every year, we gave, we gave away $3 million in tax breaks last year, and you can't tell me you can make housing right, put a roof over everyone's head, give them a decent job, give them a decent salary, these things are possible, we don't have the political will to do it, because the council is completely captured by corporations who fill up their campaign coffers and turn the agenda. So again, my name is Gigi Burdeman, I'm number six on the ballot, I appreciate it.
So I'm gonna try, I'm gonna try to do this without a microphone, and if you have trouble hearing this straight, you can, I'll get a little louder. This is the first time, my name is Portia Shul, I'm a sixth generation Washingtonian. I grew up in Shepherd Park, in the northwest, and then about eight years ago, I moved east of the river to Deanwood. Y'all know where Deanwood is, you can invite me there. About four and a half years ago, I was born a company of the absolute most perfect five-year-old boy you have ever seen in your entire life. His name is Malik. Malik was born in two teen parents, neither of whom had finished high school. Neither of whom had finished high school. I took Malik so that they could get on their feet, and they would graduate high school, and in fact, they did something else. Rather than finish a school, they could do three more children. Now, I'm running for council, because I can't take every kid who eats at home, but what I can do is get on the council, make sure Malik's siblings and every other child in the city does not fall for the rights. I'm running because I firmly believe that every single child in this city deserves access to a high-quality public education, no matter where they live, no matter how much money their parents made, and the land that they own. I believe that economic development should happen with us, and that to us, and what seven, eight issues just happened, right? Right? I think we need economic development that is meaningful, that creates jobs, we need jobs, we need training programs that actually work, and train people for jobs that exist and pay a living wage. But finally, I think we need some integrity and accountability back on this council, and this is a guarantee I can make to you. I will look you in your eyes, lie down on your face, and I won't lie to her for that. I need your vote on November 4th, because we wanna change DC. We wanna change DC, and I need more help to do it. So I need you to pick number seven on the ballot on November 4th, or earlier if you vote, and I need your support. Thank you.
I'm Reverend Rayland Haggler, I'm running for one of the seats and ask for one of your votes on November 4th, on number 14 on the ballot. I wanna correct something that Brother Eric Jones said, that quote is not from the ballot, that's some, some ways out, but that's not a real report. You know, you just can't, I'm sorry, this evening, the preacher comes out in here every now, amen. You know, the issue is, we can talk about employment, we can talk about education, we can talk about affordable housing, we can talk about public housing, but the reality that underlies the discriminatory factor in all of that is the racism that continues to exist in the policies and destruction of Washington DC. When we look around, I always ask, and I ask all the white candidates all the time, I say, "If it's only about class, then take me to the white slug in DC." You can find it in all the law, you can find it in Richmond, you can find it in Philly, up and down the East Coast, but you cannot find it in DC, because a plantation has been maintained to keep the poor poor, and to keep black folks in their place, and to remove them at will. I'm glad that Reverend Willie Wilson lifted up that whole chronology of history, because it shows us that this is not a new paradigm, but it's an old paradigm that's always been in motion. So the thing that I would stand up is demand that any entity in DC has to hire black folks, has to hire our young women and our young men, that they have to be responsible in terms of putting up affordable housing, really and truly affordable housing, that we have to fight to bring every single public housing unit back online and expand it, so that there are options for people to be able to remain in the city. We can do none less, we have to stand up and demand and be able to organize, even when I go to office, we're gonna have to continue to organize, because we got folks there who are really perpetuating the status quo, and that is the dispossession of us from our communities and from our neighborhoods and from our history. Vote on November 4th, number 14, Haggler.
Amen. Good evening, morning. East of the River, oh, I'm sorry. My name is Calvin Miller. Most of you know me, president of Fairmont Civic Association for meaning and conscience, also vice president of the first baby with orange hair patrol that was created in Anticoastal. I'm not new to this area. And most of us know, most of you know me, we participate in Reverend Wilson's, Reverend Wilson's. But it turned into a unifex. And some of us were here when Reverend Wilson had a boycott against a Korean store owner that disrespected one of our members, one of our members in the neighborhood. So that's the issue, I can share with you. And that's important, because that's what you want from one of these candidates here, and I'm not candidate, and that is, somebody who's gonna be here with you, who's gonna have your voice. Once you vote them out, them in, are you gonna see them again? And that's what we're talking about here. Some of the candidates say, think that getting endorsements for Washington, vote for North West Burn is the way of winning your vote, that's a shortcut. You need someone here, like me, from the neighborhood, from the community, that work with you, and that's what it's about. Anyone can give you a nice answer. But the true question right now is, who's gonna lead, who's gonna have your voice, once you vote them in? As far as housing, what we need to do, I promise you, head on the council, there's a one committee this council does not have, and that is a committee on housing. So I'm just trying to get a committee on housing and job development. We need to strengthen our rent control. The main thing we need to do in this city is bring jobs. Without jobs, and we have nothing right.
Good evening. Good evening, I'm Robert White, I'm running for one of the at-large seats tonight, one of your votes. I'm a fifth-generation Washingtonian, I'm a bar attorney, spent my career working for Congresswoman Alvin O'Connell for, that's her legislative counsel, but I quit my job to run for this seat, because what is in front of us is important. I'm running because my father, who's injured back here, can't afford to live in our city anymore. I'm running because my brother is a returning citizen, and if not for the stability of his family, couldn't be where he is now, which is successful. I'm running because a young man was murdered three weeks ago in this city, and he was my cousin. These are not theoretical issues to me. Let me ask Mr. Gurley, taking shortcuts, what if you from this neighborhood, and you got the Washington Post and Postman, and you knocked on 20,000 doors, and you understand these issues personally? I can't let that down, because I can't let our family down. We can't have someone go to the council with a ton of good intentions and good answers, we need someone who understands what they are doing, who is gonna make sure that we are participants in the growth of our city. Business is not bad because I need people to employ you, development is not bad because I need housing for you to live in. We have to be smart enough to understand how this thing works and to make it work for us. That's what we are challenged to do. But we have to elect someone who knows how to do it, and it's not going to compel us to get answers, that's who's gonna get the job done, it's you, for me and for my family. That's what I'm really saying. Thank you.
Good evening, morning. Thank you for inviting me tonight. I'm Michael B. Brown, many of you know me, I come down here often to honor the United States Senator, and that's what I've done for the past eight years. I'm still up for your rights. I've got 35 years' experience in politics, I've done everything from being ANC Commissioner to being a community leader by being head of my civic association, to being the United States Senator, ran a successful business in the city. And the answer to the question we broached tonight is that the problems in our community, especially in Fort Seven Eight, are education, housing, and jobs, and they're connected. You can't get a job without a decent education, and we have 51% of the kids dropping out of high school in this ward. I mean, just imagine that the nation's capital, on the first day of school, we're saying to kids, "You've got less of a chance of succeeding than you do of succeeding." We've got, before, we've got so many loopholes in the inclusionary zoning laws, that you can't afford a house in this city, 26,000 units have been built without one affordable housing unit being built. You need education, you need jobs. To get jobs, you need money. We put up $1.4 billion aside for small businesses, and we've only spent $400 million. Where is the billion dollars? We need to spend money to create jobs, 75% of all jobs are created by small business. But your number one problem is corruption in the Wilson Building. We've seen three council members go to jail, we've seen five people in the city on the last annual campaign plead guilty to serious offenses, we've seen two candidates who took money from Jeffrey Smith. It's time, it's time to make a change in that bill. Thank you.
I'm Alyssa Silverman, and like my fellow candidates, I'm asking for 102 votes November 4th. One way in which I'm different, I guess, from everyone else is, this is my second rodeo. As many of you know, I ran in special election last year, and I ran, it was nuts, to be honest. I ran simply because I got fed up. I got fed up because for the past five years, I had worked for a group called the DC Fiscal Policy Institute, who are the folks who study the city's budget, and advocate for folks of low and moderate income in our city, on things like tanning, homeless services, I deal with workforce development, job training. And I got frustrated because the corruption was a major distraction from the things I felt that had been closed, things like how we go house our homeless families, how we close the achievement gap, how we develop this city in a responsible way. And so I did something nuts, I ran for office, and I didn't take corporate money, so everyone wrote me off, and I talked about things like paid sick days and a living wage, and I was told, "Don't talk about substance or specifics, because you'll lose." And I guess you're right, because I lost, but I came within four points of winning. And what I'd say, Reverend Wilson, to answer your question, is that, you know, I think if you're left around and you're bored and bored, eh?
I'm going to have to say something for this. Anita Barnes Law was not Anita Barnes Law, it was Jack Evans' law. Anita Barnes was a freshman county. She couldn't have passed that law. It was Jack Evans who did it, it was what during the mayor's election, it was the campaign law. All right, let's introduce it. Who pushed it? It was Jack Evans. Let me, let me finish. It's not trash law, it was Phil Mendez who modified it and cut the nation under Anita Barnes.
There it is.
Okay? Think about how it would need.
...of the thirty percent of their income in and rate. Okay, that concludes this section of our candidates and candidates. At this point, we're going to have questions, each one from the sponsors of this forum tonight. People who are families coalition, Reginald Black will ask the question for that composition. Street Sense, Robert Lawrence, Sharp, Eric Sheplock, Sheptop. Uh, Reentry Network, Courtney Stewart, React Radio, Kemon Truman, Empowerment C. The Trees Belt, National Black United Front, Salim Lagoffo, get that on please. Uh, would ask you with. Okay, all right, uh, Mr. Reginald Black, people who play this position, please. Uh, we are broadcasting live on React Radio Community in Action. Good evening, candidates, I'm Reginald Black. And, uh, people from the families is volunteer organization that's been working on the homes for the last seven years. So our question for you tonight. What do you plan to do about discrimination against poor animals? And how would discrimination be regulated if you were elected and all of you can answer that? Okay, we're going to start down another end, Mr. Brown, please.
Well, I think the first thing you have to do is enforce the law. There's a lot of laws on the books, uh, and a lot of them are not enforced. Uh, so that's the first thing you have to do. And the next thing you have to do is you have to bring people together because discrimination is based on difference. You know, I spent a lot of time east of the river. I find that there's a strong sense of community over here and there are lovely people that live in this part of the city. But most of the people on my side of the river don't get over here. They don't see what's going on. They don't understand the people who live over here. And I think that we have to bring people together, you know? Discrimination isn't something that ends overnight. I grew up in North Jersey in a segregated city, so I've dealt with it my whole life. And I think that, one, you have to enforce the laws around the world. And two, you have to get people together so that they understand that they're more alike than they are.
Okay, what we want to do at this point, so that we will have a chance for every one day answer, because we have so many candidates, we might not finish. Uh, going to ask the remaining groups to direct your question, and since Mr. Brown has asked the one, direct your question to one of the other candidates, uh, so that each candidate will get a chance to respond. Here's there are those who, monthly candidates who, uh, disagree with the answer given. You can raise your card. You'll have one minute to respond. So, uh, Street Sense, Robert Lawrence.
Good evening, candidates. Uh, yes, sir. My name is Robert Lawrence, I'm a street sense vendor, also a member of the People's Village Coalition. Also one of the founding members of Sharp, which stands for Sharp House and Respect for Change. But more importantly than lifelong DC resident. And so my question is, Mr. Brown, uh, one of the things I'd just like to say real quick. One of the things I noticed when I got on the bus yesterday going to work was there were people lined up, homeless people lined up, sleeping, sleeping at, uh, East of Mondo. All those businesses along Pennsylvania, there were homeless people sleeping on the streets in cover rooms. And one other thing I noticed the other day that's heard was when I was on my way to 7-Eleven early in the morning, about five thirty in the morning, there were folks who was lined up to receive food in District 111 from one of those churches. And so I bring these points up because people who I advocate for as Street Sense and my fellow vendors who sell Street Sense newspaper, they're over the age of, I would say, fifty years old. And that represents most of the homeless population. So my question is around LSRP, which is the local rent supplement. I was a program that they have in District 111, which Mayor apparently has put no money into. There is no plan for closing, uh, DC General Hospital to give any of those families over there a local rent supplement voucher to allow them to bid to those who are in District 111. All those folks who are fifty years old, who are not going to be able to meet and fit themselves as far as a job goes, they're not going to get to. So my question is, how would you, uh, I would direct this question to, uh, Mr. Perry. How would you as a councilman, how would you ask to fund the local rent supplement program? Because right now, there is not enough money. And that's the number one thing that's going to give District Presidents housing that they need in District 111. But no one wants to fund it. So how would you fund it? How would you fund LSRP, like?
Well, that's a great point. And not only is there not enough funds, but they don't do what they say they're going to do. They just raid the housing production trust fund. When they created the local rent supplement program, they said they were going to make a thousand units every year. And by 2012, they already had a fifty-two hundred meter backlog or something around that area. So we need to put more money towards the local rent supplement program so it has its own dedicated source of money. I think there's a million ways we can do it. I mean, one, we can stop wasting money and doing things like giving a hundred and fifty million dollars to the soccer stadium. But two, when you raise the point about businesses, this is a very good point. Because you know, there's three thousand and three businesses in DC that make, that have over five million dollars in sales that pay the minimum, the minimum corporate franchise tax, a thousand dollars. So really, three thousand businesses with over five million dollars in sales who only pay a thousand dollars in taxes. What we really need to do is also make sure that we're making sure that people can, that who can pay are paying their fair share, which puts us in a position to fund things like the local rent supplement program, which quite frankly is not an add-on. But housing is a human right. It's not a commodity. It's not a luxury. It's giveaway. And we need to put the resources there. And there are people who have the resources who escape it.
Uh, hello, maybe there is Sheptop. Oh, one second. We got a court response here to the question.
Now, this is a good decision, Mr. Perry, you know, there's one thing that we have to deal with, is follow back. We have two sets of people in the city council. We have one set from City Council, a couple of the game, the campaign budget. We have another set of folks who understand what the budget looks like, how we need a budget. What they do when they use the ticket like the budget, they get great causes, they strip the bank out. Where the county, councilman need a lot of people to build to eliminate housing, uh, homeowners taxes. We knew David was building second fairly because she didn't understand what she was doing. She went up against someone who's smarter than her and stronger than her. And what they did was, that was political game, they challenged her the world. And when it came to the budget support act, they ripped it off from her. Well, we need to stop the way to letting folks to the council who don't understand what it means, not just being legislation, but understand what a budget is. That budget document has enough money already put in place to take care of these issues. But we're too busy building street cars, we're too busy giving our handouts and giving away the votes to try to be elected or soccer stadium that we don't need. Matter of fact, we're waiting a hundred thousand dollars a year on a baseball team that can go back and catch that fun. That we don't deal with, we don't talk about, because we don't have twenty-two degrees.
I really have to say something about this. Nita Barnes Law was not a Nita Barnes Law. It was Jack Evans' law. Nita Barnes was a graduate counselor. She couldn't have passed that law. It was Jack Evans who did it. It was what during the mayor's election, it was the campaign law. All right, let's hear it, introduce it. Oh, who pushed it? It was Jack Evans. Let me, let me finish. It's not trash law. It was Phil Mendez who modified it and cut the nation under Nita Barnes. Think about how it would need. There's a strong rent control, a housing reduction fund that has standards and deadlines and a council that will open, will use oversight on the house reduction. DC has to get back to what, open houses. Opening houses is not a bad word. It's for working folks, for carless drivers, especially carless drivers. They have these high student loans. The entry loan for the day you need is a thirty thousand. It's not enough to pay for two thousand dollars a month.
Thank you. Uh, next question, Reentry Network, Courtney Stewart.
Oh, yeah, okay. I thought I was going to do, I could, I could, you had more than a guy, you know, but, uh, anyway, uh, I should tell you that we all have, you don't have to give the answers, you have to question. But that said, uh, I, the chairman of Sharp, shows you how to expect for change. And, uh, so what I want to point out is that we have, at this point in the year, probably over eight thousand homeless people. It's toward nine thousand. And, and, uh, there are seventy thousand people on the waitlist that just got purged. And, and, uh, there's a great deal. But that said, the ICH intergates council homelessness as we meet in June 2006, talking about what they're doing to end homelessness. And the number of homeless went from six thousand one hundred fifty-seven in January of '06 of the year that they came together, and is now at over eight thousand, you know? And so what I want to know is not if you're going to address homelessness, but how are you going to address homelessness? And how are you going to address the fact that the seventy thousand people on the waitlist are just waiting to fall off, to tip into homelessness? Because as people are getting out of homelessness, some of those seventy thousand become homeless. And so I want to direct my question at Reverend Hagler, you know, hoping that I'm just not concerned, but, but nonetheless. How, how are you going to make sure that we address the need comprehensively so that these seventy thousand become part of the eight thousand homeless? So we don't fill in the hole, you know, the homeless shelter.
So obviously, very, very important question. Thank you. One, one of the things that I always come back to the point, because I think as a culture, somehow we have started talking about shelters and things like that, as if somehow it's normal, right? And the fact is, is we need to expose and lift up that that is something that everybody should be outraged that you have people who are in shelter, because everybody deserves a decent roof over there. That's one, period, plain and simple. That's a human right. The other thing that we need to focus on, I think, is in terms of really how you pressure companies to be able to hire folks. Because as long as companies can sort of ignore the problem and stigmatize it, uh, it continuously proliferates out. One of the things is obviously, for those businesses that want to have a social responsibility, they should have some type of taxing center as they hire DC residents and as they hire people who have been homeless and begin, in a sense, to put the resources in people's pockets so that people can basically live a degree of life of some species.
All right, Courtney, Stewart, Reentry Network.
Um, as far as the understanding, Courtney, we have to go with some other question. Now that Bank of Walrus legislation has passed, how do you, how will you enforce the legislation? And ensure that the business community creates more job opportunities for returning citizens? And I would direct that to Mr. Pitts, because he has a business. And I would just ask another question to Mr. Pitts. How many return citizens?
I probably have, according to your interview, I have four of my lifetime. That's just two days ago, um, while I was walking up, um, Fifteenth Street. That's the first return citizen, uh, that I, that I hired, uh, totally back in town, uh, looking for a job. I said, give, you know, give my manager a call, for example, for a driver's job, I have a driver's job for you. Or if you're looking to get back into, maybe busting, doing your kitchen work, you want to get back in the kitchen. And I'll, we can talk about that. I say this is how you enforce the issue. Again, I'm for banning the laws, uh, the race of enforcement. And I agree to talk about accountability for our agency. And our agencies do a horrible job, uh, enforcing some of the, uh, what does, uh, in D.C. area, a horrible job enforcing some of the laws around this. So I think we need enforcement of the agency, even from, from what their council is accountable. It's accountability of what you're doing, uh, through the data, who you're surveying, and finding what they're doing. And the second aspect of it is that if you're not doing what you've got to do, we're going to hope to get your money back from that, from the agencies.
Banning the Walrus is good, but from what I believe, from my nephew's journey to return a citizen, and being out in the street, almost giving sicknesses, I found out that DC government is still releasing their records to employees who are being employed. And that's the problem we have. Banning the Walrus is fine, but we have to stop this government and leading on our citizens and releasing that information. That is the problem.
I just want to add something. You know, this question, sort of, sort of a trick question here. You know, I was just talking, we had a ward seven event earlier this week. And I was just talking to someone who was just, uh, like, oh, they're looking for a job. You know, I depend, I depend on does to try to find, uh, employees, uh, to my job. District has a horrible job to help me find employees. So I go to Craigslist or Word about sort of thing. You know what? I would love to employ or hire more returning citizens or those who are in transitional homelessness. But, you know, I've got to have the attitude as a business person to go find them. You know, I don't have the time to go walk through. Well, thank you very much. And that is very kind of you. Thank you very much. All right. Well, do, you want to do me a favor? Do me a very kind of me, because one thing, as a small business person, you know, I, I'm a customer of my payroll, I'm a customer of HR. You know, one of the things I would like from this government is, can you help locate those agencies, those non-profit organizations to help me bring people to me? So I don't have to go out and find them myself or find them for the fifty employees. So I thank you very much, and thank you very much for the question.
So I just want to say something really quickly about this. I mean, I'm sure there are many business owners like Mr. Pitts, but, you know, as someone who was the co-founder of the Jobs Town James Coalition, I've dealt with a lot of returning citizens, not one of them tell me, oh, I'm having trouble finding a place to apply. They tell me that I went up there and I applied in a hundred different jobs and I never got a call back from them. So my real issue is not that people define returning citizens, they need some incentive to return returning citizens. What they really need is to have fear God put in them about what their reality is going to be when they're discriminated against people. We have an office of administrative experience that doesn't even have any judges, so you can't even hear the cases. What we really need is to take all these little agencies, obviously, Human Rights, Office of People's Council, Office of the Tend to Advocate, that are also underfunded and underbanned, put them in one agency, a department of Human Rights, that's headed up by an independent fellow advocate who doesn't get caught up in the mayor's pocket, that goes after these people, the person who's calling them. They keep knowing what they're doing, they have to go after them, but no one really wants to do it. And no disrespect to you, but the rest of the association that endorsed you was the person watering down Bank of Walrus. They were the ones who tried to turn citizens that you can't sue when you're discriminated against, which hamstrings legislators. Everyone talks about legislation. One of the key ways that you get legislation is to be able to actually identify the problem. If returning citizens cannot sue, the cases are going to get caught out at the Office of Human Rights. We're not going to have an appropriate permission, and we're not going to be able to deal with it. So I think we have to be very real about this. It's not that I can't find them, it's that they won't happen.
You know, and I can't, restaurant association, you're asleep, but I am not a restaurant association. And then until you first get that form, things I'm going to do tomorrow, about things I should have against the court, or for, 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 whether it take six days or other days. So I can only think to me, and what the values I'm agreeing to the city council is, uh, and, and, and the city council. What I do, I've looked for returns, I've looked, I've known those permissions, I don't find those folks. Uh, we're looking for returns, we're looking for, sometimes it works out, sometimes it doesn't. So I don't want to blanket the whole entire, there are some good advocates. But as Reverend Hagler says, we need to incentivize some of the advocates and help those good advocates find what they want to be.
Well, really quickly, here's my problem with everything that's discussed here. The problem is big in this department of agency, the problem is the old city administrator, who's the second highest person in our city government, in the family. Here's one of the real issues that I told my clients. Unfortunately, especially with returning citizens, we keep doing so-called training, the medical training, the real training. I reserve returning citizens for industries and careers that are getting smaller. As I said earlier, why are we training every family who's a returning citizen to work with construction? When we have less and less construction jobs every year? Or why are we trying to be a bar for our own health aid or on cost of time? We need to be mandated and insured that we're putting them places where jobs are growing and not shrinking. I have a personal story. My mother's a returning citizen, and she had to leave a local meeting. But what I think my mother would talk about is, when she goes to apply for a job, she sees the same interview people when she applies for a job, and she knows one of them is going to get the job. Because the same regular folks she seems to have a job interview, with the same number of folks she's been programmed at two years ago. We need to blow up any sport, this so-called program that we have in our cities, in the Department of the Public Service. I'm sorry, private empowerment and empowerment by a bill all the time. And this one program that doesn't allow these profitable businesses, that may be getting trained for what this construction, truck driving, and talentology is part of the problem. But it's true, we have a director in our city government that mandates our city stars, what they talk about. They don't walk the walk. They want businesses to hire. But less than thirty percent of our city government employees live in our cities. They don't look like us, and they don't act like us, and they don't live where we live. So I can go, but they don't know what they're saying.
React, React Radio? Kemon Truman?
And, uh, just reminded of the hospital, uh, for our guest, uh, React Radio Community in Action, Empowerment C. Uh, very good question. Affordable housing is computed, this, I have to start with trouble, uh, because, uh, I'm looking for an answer. So whoever has the best answer can take this, because I think this is the most fundamental issue concerning quote unquote affordable housing. Affordable housing is computed by the area median income, which factors in the rural suburbs around DC doing disservice to DC residents, take that. Forget the highest, and those that, who, you know, remember, it's a disservice to everyone in the bottom percent. So affordable housing to be quote unquote affordable, a resident should not pay more than thirty percent of income. As indicated earlier, the federal guidelines, uh, under the housing, the government. What would you do to ensure that affordable housing is defined whereas people are not paying more than thirty percent of the income of rent? This is not just four people, this is certainly across the city, they're paying more than thirty percent of the income of rent. What would you do to redefine affordable housing so that it does not exceed the income of thirty percent of that person?
First thing you do is adjust the factors. What they use as far as the average middle income is the salaries for the income of families who lived in rural villages, they call the metropolitan area, which will explode that average. If you use the true income of the district, not being DC, only four, that one oh seven, you change it to lower it.
Uh, so, so one of the things I would like to do is, I need to definitely help other with their homework. And if you think the same thing, they, 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 uh, you know, they have to change income. But the reason that the area median income is that, is because of the federal God. So the date is not something that the council can change when you're talking about federal funds. If we want to change what we define as affordable, then we have to use more power dollars, local dollars in this, and redefine it, uh, based on what we believe is affordable. The other thing that we have to do is understand market reality. That's why we need somebody, an adult with experience on this council. The market reality, as long as you have significantly more people who want to live in this city than you have available housing, then you have a housing affordability problem. So I'm looking at both for me, popular, and I'm saying that we are going to be a part of the construction of housing here, and we are going to be people who live there.
Yeah, that's absolutely the right answer, DC state, because it is a federal God. And, uh, we need to redefine it by getting control of our own destiny. And just to let you know, cutting the suburbs out isn't going to help us. The District of Columbia pays the highest federal income taxes in America because we have the highest per capita income of any jurisdiction in America. So when you include Montgomery, Fairfax, and Prince George's County, you bring down the income in the District of Columbia. But the way to resolve our problem is to redefine this number. And in order to do that, we need to take control of our own destiny because we don't pass any laws in the District of Columbia that aren't subject to federal approval. We need to be a state, the President of the United States is for it, the Senate is for it. We've got a hundred and twenty-nine cosponsors, and that really is the long-term solution.
So I think there's some great points that have been raised here, but let's have an honest conversation. No one who owns a home wants their property value to decrease. That is just a fact. People who own homes want to see their property value get as high as possible. The other challenge is we want to make sure that we have affordable housing, that we have a, a community in which people can buy into and rent and be comfortable and live at a, just a basic level of living, right? Which I would, I would say, level the living wage. Uh, so I think what we have to do to fix the affordable housing problem in this city is replicate something that Montgomery County has done. That is create a housing opportunities provision. There, she does a whole bunch of things. But what I let ours focus on is working with a robust network of nonprofit acquisitions to purchase vacant and light property all across the city to increase the affordable housing in our city. It has worked in Montgomery County, and it can work here. And I'm excited about the opportunity to be on the county to try very hard to make this happen. People need affordable housing, families need housing. This is also one of the ways we can fix and address some of the homelessness challenges that we have.
You know, I think that the part of the problem is that we end up being so foolish, and when I say so foolish, is that we want to fit in with the power structure that exists. We want to fit in with that. We only want to talk about the formulas that we think exist. You know, the fact is, every time we turn around and we have a will to do something in the city, like put street cars on H Street and chase out of business, black businesses, and disrupt the neighborhood, we find the money to do that. You know, but the reality is, is that when it comes down to working people, Robert, and when it comes down to poor, we're always talking about what the federal government is going to do or not do. But when it comes down to developers, we always find a way in which to find money to accommodate them. But we don't accommodate people who live in our neighborhood. Stop trying to fit in. Stand up for the people. Allow your candidacy and represent the people. Everybody up here, I want to challenge them, like, to stand up with some backbone and speak on behalf of the people. Cease trying to fit in and be the people that we're called to be. And free DC from listening all the way.
I just want to make two very good points here, but I think one of the key issues is this. I mean, I, I think this is quite wasted, one good point about the legal issue around AMI. But what we know is that HUD also keeps the DC family median income that's about twenty thousand dollars lower. I don't know why we can't use that number, and I think, quite personally, I mean, all of these attorney general candidates say they want to be the people's lawyer. I say we change the law, we change the measure, and we take it to court to see what the legality of that issue is. I also think on the issue of market reality, this is, that, that is a key point. I mean, there's all these developers say, oh, well, there's no money. But we have this two billion dollars right now of DC money in Wall Street banks that goes to make them rich. It doesn't do anything for us. We can have a DC public bank, so when developers say, oh, I would love to do more affordable housing, but we don't have the financing to get there. We can say, no, this is where the money is, so we use our own money to support our own people and to keep the economy going. There are alternatives and different ways to do things. We just have to be creative and up to date and think outside of the box.
I have to tell, I just got to say, I have a ton of respect for Reverend Hagler, but I spent the last eight years of my life standing up for the people in this city. And I can't get anybody to stand behind you. Let me tell you, no money, no salary, no funding, and I've gone up and kicked Congress in the ass every damn chance I've got.
Oh, Jesus.
For the first time in twenty-one years, someone testified for the United States Senate, and that person was me. And I want to tell you, I spent every damn day of my life standing up for this city. And what I need is I need some people to have my back. And that's why I want to be a member, because I want to stand up for Washington. And the reason that we find the money for the developers is we have a is we have a colonial mentality because we're a power.
And if I'm going to say, Reverend, don't take the easy way out. You know, it's easy to point out fault, but I'm looking for some solution. You know, unless you're going to return the money, or say that we don't want our federal HUD money, then don't act like it's the same old money that broke in the city used for development. AMI is not a fund, those are different issues. And we need someone on the council who understands.
Well, see, the problem with fitting in is that, like in the housing production trust fund, people that borrowed money out of to build affordable housing that they didn't pay back and basically depleted the money because they're connected and they have all these political connections. When you fit in, the people get screwed over every time. We need to stand up and be autonomous and begin to speak on behalf of the real issues in DC and protect the people.
How about you, Robert?
Okay, so I let those talk. And you know, it kind of bothers them to me. It is not the Reverend anymore, but I find it kind of funny. You know, I'm just saying, that's what shocked a lot of people. About ten minutes ago, a guy named Mary Mary, who all of y'all know, he just endorsed the person who got him to walk out of the room because she couldn't beat him. That's what she really went for. Now, let's talk about the fact here. Those thirteen folks in the council have been endorsed by the same groups of people for the past twenty years. You know what? We're going to talk about some of the legal folks, we're going to talk about some of the working families folks, we're going to talk about some of these folks who say they have our best interests at heart. And if we have our best interests at heart, how come they keep on giving us the same trap over and over? You know, I live on this little street that's three blocks long in Northwest Washington DC, called Bay Street, right off the corner of Florida North Capitol. About thirty-two years ago, it was this little thing called the Bay Street Project, where they wanted an unfortunate sister, and they built a building for $2. And they took her to court, he said, and they sold them to our residents. I'm going to let you know something right now. The majority of my neighbors who are over fifty have been there thirty-plus years. And you know what they say to me when I decided to run? They said, Eric, why doesn't Bay Street's the same thing DC all over Rousen? I'm going to tell you why this is what we see. A, like Robert said, we have folks who don't understand the difference between HUD dollars and O fund and a real budget. B, we have folks who talk a good game, who get on our council, who come to our churches, who lie on this referendum basis, and all they want to do is get another check from our city. I don't care if we get Board One or Board Eight, that council needs to go. And as long as y'all people are open and letting the same group, like the same powers in, y'all will get the same result. And I'm sorry, do the same thing twice, expect the same result, or definitely understand it. As long as we keep on letting the same group, get the same group who stand up and lie, and all of them look embarrassed, everybody, you're going to get it. I'm sorry, I started on Board Eight, and I didn't go five. But I've been here for 104 years, and we tired of the same trap. And if you tired of standing to vote for somebody who ain't listening to the same trap anymore, thank you very much.
In power, DC.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Skylar, I'm from Des Moines. I represent Board Eight, I give over, while place of will. And I am the organizer of the Power DC. So my question to any of you up there, federal support for public housing, I live in public housing, need my children. Federal support for public housing has been decreased to the point of severe neglect. They don't fix nothing when we live here. We are living in some conditions. However, DC will say, well, the federal government is not giving us any money, so we got to go to these private people, developers, to come and tear down your projects, put you out, and do a public-private partnership, which is what Muriel Bowser is so for, which is what's causing this place. So I want to have me with Muriel Bowser and ask her to put local funding into the budget to repair public housing units. Because currently, there's zero dollars in this local budget for public housing repairs and upgrades. So I'm asking any of you up there, what will you do? What kind of revenue will you create, or how will you create, or will you create a way to put money into a way to upgrade where we live besides the same old public-private partnership tear down? Only half y'all, two of y'all come back, nobody can come back. And now, another public land is sold to a private developer. You got some crap like Willa Creek, and these Capitol Parkway, and all the papers where land on, nobody who used to live there is there anymore. What will you do to upgrade our units without putting this out, without tearing it down, and without having to use private money?
Well, I'm going to start from the beginning. As I said, I keep on saying, part of the problem is, we have folks in our council who can't read a budget. And that's the real, that's the real solution. Get that shot out of the door, see? Next year, our budget is around $13.3 billion. Just for those who know the country, we're one-fifth the size of the city of Chicago. Our budget is more than twice the size of the city of Chicago. Their budget is six and a half billion. Our is $13.3. Next year's will be $13.8, and we bought in an extra $250 million last year. And they found reason to do everything else, put in streetcars, put out the violence. But what we have not realized is, is turning the power groups. I'm going to give you a great example. We wasted about $40 million a year on something called a baseball tax. We taxed businesses to pay for a baseball stadium. And the law is, if we have extra money coming in, we're supposed to pay them the debt faster so that we can use that money to reinvest in our community. But you know, without having a council that has not done much, they even paid you on that debt faster because the money that's going to reinvest in our community is supposed to go for exactly what we're talking about. But the problem is, most folks don't understand the logic. So Jackie Evans and Bill Nissen will pull the wool over their eyes every year, and they stop doing it. We need someone who understands the budget, who know how to go in there and demand it, and actually, when it comes in, those are where it belongs. And that's what I'm doing.
You know what? I think they understand the budget. I think they know how to manipulate and use it against us. You know that we gave $500 million back this year to taxpayers that make up to a million dollars a year. That's money that we could use. But we rely on the federal government, and we use the federal government. We use them as an excuse. You know, we have emergency legislation for the city council. And emergency legislation means that you don't have to open it up to the public, you don't have to have public hearings, you don't have to have transparency. And we do so much emergency legislation because we can keep the cards close to the vest, and we do it because we say we don't want it to sit on Capitol Hill for thirty to sixty days. The truth of the matter is that we have to take control of our own destiny. We have the money to do this, we should allocate it for that, and we should stop using the federal government as a damage user.
Reverend Hagler?
Michael Brown lifts that up because he continues to remind us of all principles around, really statehood. And the thing is, is that we got to begin to act autonomous, even in our legislative body, and stop sitting and saying that Congress won't allow us to do this, or HUD won't allow us to do this. The fact is, if you got an attorney general, one of the things that the attorney general should do is sue HUD for operating in humane conditions in Washington DC and move HUD into receivership if necessary, maybe under the receivership of Washington DC, since we were under receivership years ago because of public housing. You know, the fact is, is that we got to begin to act as an autonomous people and look at also all of the reserves that we're sitting on. All of the reserves that we're sitting on, what are those reserves for if they're not really to be used for the uplift of humanity within our city and for our people within our city? Let us stop playing games and doing the half step and the soft shoe, and stand up and be people and act autonomous for true.
Well, I just have to say really quickly that, you know, I think it's a good question. You all aren't just talking. I got the number from you that I use all the time, that it would take about $1.3 billion to bring public housing back up to that level of fit, be fit for human habitation. We just heard, what was it, $13.3 billion? So $1.3 billion, $13.3 billion, and we can't find a way to do it. It's kind of, we can't find a way, it's something we don't want to find. I think, and I think what we have to be very clear here, that what we're operating with in public housing too, this is a big change we have to make, and this is what happens in communities, an ideology that was put in and applied administration about concentrated poverty, that says if you put a lot of poor people together, all of it's going to be terror. Well, if you're worried about people having concentrated poverty, maybe what you should do is not just move half of them to BG County in these press releases about how you got poverty, but actually give them jobs and employment and housing in a way to make it at a level they can afford, so they don't live in poverty anymore. So we have to move beyond this idea that was really sort of just like structural adjustment in Latin America, austerity in Europe, where we had it in the 1990s, where people, poor people in this country were short-changed. They were short-changed until they had to accept less, and we have to stop that right now. And we really, huge bill of dollars is here, huge bill, every year, by now.
I've heard some pretty fantastic points up here, Eugene, I just have to lift up what you said, wherever have been yours as well. But my son started the first eighteen months of his life in South of Terrors. I, like I said, grew up in Chuff Park. When I went over to visit him at first, when we first became a family, to visit his siblings, the conditions in South of Terrors are remarkable. And I understand that that's one of the best housing projects, not one of the absolute worst. The city has made a commitment to doing a whole range of things. How much, you gave me $1.3 billion? How much is it going to cost to implement the entire streetcar program? For the first phase, $1.3 billion. We made a commitment to that, and we have committed, made a commitment to our families, to our struggling to survive every single day. We got to, one, make sure that we have effective job training, effective job training program. We have to improve DC public schools to ensure that our young people can find their way out of poverty before they get into it. And three, I think this is critically important, we have to put some money into preparing the conditions in which we have people living, and that is across the board. I, the mold, the vice, the holes in the ceiling, no shock. No person, but certainly no shock. Should live in those sorts of conditions, and when I'm on a council, I guarantee you, I'm going to join your fight. I will work with you to pass legislation that will increase the budget to ensure that we do just that, improve public housing and even statehood.
National Black United Front, Selena Donfor.
Is that set up?
Selena's out of the community, so I'll be asking a question on behalf of the National Black United Front. Her name is Jen Sabrian, and I'm a ward and resident, and here is their question. Chief of Police Kathy Leneer testified this morning and essentially deflected accountability of the jump-out boy phenomenon by testifying that it's most likely being done by other agencies. What are your plans for limiting the use of jump-outs? Also, what do you think about the DC Ferguson movement's demands, which include, one, a legitimate community review board with indictment and firing power? Two, community police pink where a percentage of the police are required to live in the communities they patrol? And three, investigations of officers who discharge their weapons on unarmed civilians?
Well, I can just jump in there, and I'll start at the end. Since I was one of the people who fell, come up with the name of the DC Ferguson movement, I'm 100% with it. And, you know, there's some idea out here that you can't have a police review board with firing power because the police wouldn't allow it. It's a collective bargaining issue. If the mayor doesn't have the will to stand up to the police and tell them that the community should have input on what is acceptable behavior when you're going to take someone's life, then I think the mayor should be recalled and get kicked out. I think any council member that appreciates that, be called and kicked out. Every night, every 28 hours, a black person is murdered in this society by a police officer, a vigilante, or a security guard. This is a very serious issue. In terms of the jump-outs, we should ban it. Again, the mayor should do it. I think that the council should immediately pass a resolution being opposed to the jump-out boys. It is MPD, in, consultation with a lot of these federal agencies, which is exactly what happened when the young man was killed by the police a few weeks ago. That it was the Capitol Police, I believe, with the Park Police, with MPD. And I don't know what the issue is with that, but we need to investigate that as well because there's some regulations around the federal and MPD coming together. So I think we have to get rid of this whole fairy tale that Kathy Leneer is some great person. She's 4133 in the militarization of the police. She put the checkpoints out there and tricked the dad, which we declared unconstitutional. She follows, she gets over the jump-out boys that are in every single district in DC. So ultimately, we have a DC Ferguson, and that's why we gave the movement that name. Because it's not just a Ferguson. And just because they don't introduce us on protest, doesn't mean that they don't lose too much of their social doors and way too much research to go back and live like I am. Right now, I can walk on here and raise my robe up.
What I want us also to remember is that a lot of, when we talk about the militarization of the police forces all across the country, including Washington DC, a lot of that comes out of the police being trained by the Israeli Defense Forces.
That's right.
Where did you remember that? But gradually, we started all of that. The fact is, they came back with really occupation kind of tactics of the community. And so when you have the jump-outs, the jump-outs are something that's not. Anybody, I was in Palestine in January, no idea, had been there, and other, and other folks have been there. And we've seen those tactics carried out over and over again because they originated from there. I'm also advocating that we need to hire our public safety personnel from DC. The fact is, when you lock them out, right now, we require that anybody to be able to apply to be a Metropolitan Police Department officer, you got to have 60 hours of college prep. I happened to sit down with a person who wrote that in the, in the human resource policy, and I asked her why. She said, because you can't trust people from DC. The fact is, is that people have been locked out of being able to use those kinds of jobs in order to advance their families and to raise their family.
Just to get a brief, since my name is Michael Brown, that, you know, this is one of the oldest principles of American government, that the civilians, not the military, run things. The President of the United States is the commander in chief, not a general, because our army, or all our armed personnel is supposed to be run by civilians. So I support all three of those provisions. I think we should have civilians review board. I think officers that discharge their weapons, in any case, should be subject to review. And so I support all three of those provisions.
All right, I think that's all opposition's response to this event, they have raised their question. We're going to have a few questions from the audience at this time. You must state your question in one minute, and direct your question to a specific fellow member who's running for head lodge. There's a microphone in the, in my left center aisle. Those who'd like to ask their question can go to that aisle, please. And we'll try to get it as soon as we can. So let us go quickly, make a very succinct, short question so that the respondent that you want to respond can answer it.
Could anyone remember one? I'm a money-getting boy. I'm a couple of hoes, couple of hoes. You have a nice, really important, it's all there, it's part of my life, it's a bit of a nightmare. Also, I am a hidden, or a standalone person. And no number of, a standalone person, it was a blessing. It seems to be one of the things that goes wrong with my family. Talking about this, because everything is what's happening. It seems to me that we still don't get the understanding of what's going on in our limited, it's a part of your vision. I'm not there, we're not there, we're citizens. But why don't we end in our own interest and approach? That we can tell people from recovery because we're the professionals. We've been fighting for this since my son was very little, I, we come across this approach through two mayors, through problems, I'd say, in the one, in the last one, in the dark one. You know, money, you know, that's a wonderful, we're fighting for our own interests and goals, such as, just give them education, I don't think, see? There's a third, there's another one, insurance authority, with the United States of America, you know, you're it. Why don't we sign, there's two part? I'm sorry, that's a bad word. But why don't we do, like, try to prepare kids to have, why don't we try to give them powers? Anything to help them, I don't know, I still don't know.
May I speak, who am I, please? I was scratching my hand a little while ago because two questions, his is prior. I brought him to a situation, he had a Ferguson in the city, a few years back. A young man named, the mom said, "Roh," where you, please. Thank you. In a way, he was shot in the back by a police force, who was trying to find the person who broke up with his garage and stole a motorbike. And with that situation, I think that our police department does need to be trained. Number two, in this situation is, the police chief failed to bring back high school, these things. So do Mr. Smithers? Police chief?
Mr. Barnes asked, what are we going to do to prevent violence, to prevent people from going to prison? And I appreciate that question, and I appreciate the effort, and that you have brought many years to this issue. I think we know what the cheese is on. They are improving our schools, getting our kids in the schools that's really going to give them a late shot at life. But our goal as a community historically are, are to make sure that our schools are strong enough and that our kids can go further than parents, and that's what we have to make commitments to. But we also have to make sure that people have safe, healthy housing to live in. And we have to make sure... and we have to make sure that folks have jobs. Those are the keys to prevent the folks from falling from the track. And we have to make sure that we are courageous to understand and identify weird people involved. And we try to do that. We can't just talk about that school, we have to develop turnaround processes. We can't just talk about that our kid's not graduating. We need to look at why they're not graduating, and spend our trade focus on education to make sure we get them. But also, making sure that they're mentee chip programs. One of my responsibilities, as someone who's just made it through, someone who folks that work, is to make sure, and make sure that you're trying to assist, has someone they can relate to, someone they can identify with, who can help them and mentor them. And I'm gonna start a mentorship program on the council to help me out.
Well, you know, I just wanna say quickly, I think that my contribution is quite good. I mean, we look at best practices. Richmond, California was able to get drastic reductions in murders by empowering folks, many of them were returning citizens, looking to reach back and to help people directly into the streets and just talking to folks, not only mediating disputes, but bringing people into a comprehensive, holistic, both mentoring and educational program that was, you know, giving people an opportunity to choose another path. Like I said, you can certainly, there's great, obviously, your article, very remarkable, that details what they've done. Drastic reductions. Baltimore has something simpler, similar in safe streets that exist there, and I know that's some criticism, but I think it's a good program. We have a lot of brave people here in D.C. who do want to reach back, but they're not empowered to do it. A lot of times, they have to do it on a volunteer basis. I think we need to set up structures that are funded by the district's government that allow folks to directly engage with direct intervention, conflict mediation, and bringing folks into holistic programs that allow them to do that.
Yeah, Mr. Barnes, let me tell you, that's a, that's a great question, and I think the simplest answer is that we need to invest people. Uh, I'll just say, from my own experience, uh, both my parents died when I was 16 years old. I hadn't had on the street, I dropped out of high school. Till this day, I don't have a high school education. But I got picked up by the back of the neck by people that cared about me, and kicked in the rear end. And I got a diploma, worked my way to community college, college, graduate school, and I got a piece of the pie. And that's what changed my life, and that's what we need to do for the community. We need to invest them, and Robert's right, we need to educate them, we need to train them, we need to show them that there's a better way. And I, again, not only my co-owners, but thank you, your guys.
Certainly my co-owners as well. I, I agree with some of what has been set up here. Certainly, we have to invest in schools, certainly, we have to get more economic development and jobs, because of the hunger. But look, two, three weeks ago, in front of my, across the street from my home, there was a murder. I came home, luckily, my five-year-old was not wounded. So I didn't have to go through the very difficult conversation of explaining to them what had taken place, and that some poor young man that lost his life for no good reason, right? So here is the issue for me. One, the police are not another gang, and they shouldn't act like them. They are there to keep us safe in our own communities. They need to start walking the streets with community policing, so that folks in neighborhoods, again, can build relationships with officers, so that they can work with us to keep us safe. When my house got broken into, now, it's been wrong a third time. When my house got broken into, the detective asked me if my son's friends had done it. He is three. You are a terrible detective, sir, okay? But this is the point, if in neighborhoods, lower income community, in lower income community neighborhoods, in particular neighborhoods where violence exists, if police officers are accusing us of victims of crimes first, as opposed to supporting, uh, the victims of crime, that is a problem. And I don't want my tax dollars, or our tax dollars, used for a police department that is doing that. We prevent it by community policing, we prevent it by creating resources for education, we prevent it by showing our young people a different way. I would need to start a mentoring program. I've been mentoring kids in D.C. for 20 years, and I want all of us to commit to doing that even more.
Again, I want to personally thank you for your question. I think that I would sum it up with, uh, with really a four-letter word, and that is that we gotta build an equation of hope. Folks gotta have a sense that they're going somewhere, and they just can't be sitting there and feeling like that. All choices end on that street corner, or end on that street. And so it comes back to hope. Uh, and when, when I walk around, like, in Mary Barres, you know, people are not really apathetic, people are angry, ticked off, feel deserted, feel left behind, they feel that they've been betrayed. Uh, and so there's not a sense of hope that exists. And so, in everything we do, we've gotta come back to that one particular issue, that one particular idea of hope. I remember I interned when I was young with the Congress of Racial Equality, and I didn't think much of it then, but I look back now, and I realize that that created a whole trajectory for me in my life. The last 20 years, I've been doing exactly what happened in that internship at the Congress of Racial Equality, but I have hope in that.
Really quickly, first of all, thank you for your service, and that hope that you're in respect for you, and that, as some of the lost, that we're family, because I know, understand that issue. As the first person in my family to get a college degree, just my own capacity record for his, one of the things I remember hearing from my grandmother, my grandpa, my uncle, is you were able to see something different. We talk so often about education for those who go to our schools. One of the biggest problems is, they can get education, but if they don't understand the path to victory and success, it doesn't matter if you're just getting your education. We need to change the culture of society and parallel that. We talk so often about educating those young folks at school to jobs. We're not talking about helping those folks who are unemployed, or probably underemployed, or getting those careers and not just a job. We're gonna give you a job that's gonna start in June, and in August, we're not giving you a job, we're giving you a problem, because you're going back in the same cycle that you're going through in here. It's part of the training those, and educating, and how folks, our young folks see. The young folks on my street look up to me, because I'm trying to show them how to be different, because I don't want them to follow the same path that those people in the community did. Because someone did it to me, the person did it for me, someone did it for him. We have to show folks different, and that's how we start by creating jobs, folk are the consistent in place to make everyone better. When we lift everyone up, all will succeed, and that's what the Reverend has to start.
So the, uh, so Reverend has given me a, listen, moment, a personal privilege here. I said earlier, I'm gonna have to leave early to go visit one of my coworkers, and I want to be there before, um, 50 hours in. So I just wanted to say a couple things, and I won't, I mean, I still have folks to be addressing. Um, just in closing, just two things. Again, my name is Halligan, and with my colleagues up here, I'm running for one of the, at our state, in the city council. I want to talk to you two words about how you have judges, and sort of like when you're running for election for you guys, for, for focuses. Give me a quarter second, because my voice is a little slightly, a little slant. Okay, there's, like, 12, 13, 14, okay, there's your, let me just say, we'll talk about a couple things. One, actions. You know, as you said, there are judges all by our actions. My actions, uh, have been, uh, working, leading my youth efforts to elect, reelect the first African-American president, leading all labor efforts to pass this health reform. My actions have spoken, when I, as being executive board member of the D.C. Health Exchange, right, wrote, and helped craft the law, and now 57,000 people have, it's gonna be 34 now. 57,000 people have, have helped there. Reverend talked about hope, we're going to create hope. I've made choices in this city, I chose to live in this, I chose to raise my families. I chose to build a business in this city, and, and hire, turn citizens back into all the next citizens. Um, I chose to give hope in this city, Reverend talked about hope. I think every one of us is speaking hope. I respect, and this is the last, this is our last, we've just been a long road in our hope, we've got lots in this city. I just want to say, my, my fellow colleagues, I respect all of you up here, and I, we're the better persons that are being in this process, and I'm glad that I've got a chance to be in this process with you. So I must say, thank you very much, I wish you good luck, and everything's good. But I will say, from the Lord's house, my name is Halligan, I am last on the ballot, um, but as the Bible says, somewhere, Reverend, the last will be first. So I want to say, thank you very much.
We're gonna try to, uh, please, get the questions, hurry, please, now, by my watch, 4:09. Uh, and all the other candidates will get a chance to make a final statement, and then they'll wrap things up. But please, you can press the director, very short break, so we can try to get an answer to it.
Thank you, Reverend. Uh, my name is Byron Brown, I'm a ward of six resident. Chairman of the mayor's concerned black man national organization has been mentioning for over 37 years. My question to the panel is, how do you think props, 71, the national condition of 71 is gonna affect the youth you've served here in Washington, and for many years mentioning? How do you think this is gonna affect the future of our next generation?
Director, do you want one person, please?
Right, right.
I mean, I think that one of the whole things around the idea of decriminalization and legalization is obviously trying to take away the kind of liberties that comes in terms of someone being picked up and having felony on their record, uh, for that. Uh, I think it also raises the other implication of all folks apparently have, uh, that felony conviction on their record, what's gonna happen in terms of their record, it should be espoused from their record, their record needs to be cleared. Uh, that's, I think they could, they could pass. Uh, it, it should be cleared anyway, because, you know, the, the reality is that we are, we are faced with a set of choices in, in our society. Uh, I'm participating, in fact, in a press conference tomorrow on the whole issue with other clergy and others around the issue of legal, legalization. Uh, and, and, and there's another issue that we need to think about and talk about, because my father, when I came into this world, was doing time in Maryland House of Corrections and Justice, right? He was running numbers. Today in Maryland, we got the lottery, right? Uh, and now, all of a sudden, you're gonna have the legalization of, of marijuana, and who's more to be making the money, maybe ask that question?
Come on!
Thank you, next question, please.
Thank you, good evening, my name is Linda Collins, and I am a board, I'm sorry, I'm not a board president. I'm a board five resident, and a taxpayer of the District of Columbia. I'm also an advocate, today I'm here advocating for an organization called the D.C. Help Start Program. It's a program that was in the Department of Health for 21 years. Um, as you know, 21 years ago, in 1991, infant mortality in the District of Columbia was 24.9, higher than any third world country. And this wonderful program, um, first they gave money to the district to run a program, it was one of the first programs. And, um, a few weeks ago, the Help Start Program lost its funding. Uh, coincidentally, a nonprofit and a profit organization stood forward two days after that, saying the pay would then pick up advantage to do this. However, they will not have visiting nurses and family support workers who will come out into the community. Ironically, since we're talking about gentrification and racism, the highest, um, rates of infant mortality are worth seven and eight. These people will not, they will no longer receive these services. This agency would not be able to find out exactly what it is they would do. They're only saying that they're going to reduce infant mortality by the year 2025, by 5%, uh, to 5%. I'm concerned, because there's no coincidences in life. How is it that we lose the funding for one program, and there's a new program for nonprofit and profit organization, for a profit organization, that's going to come on board? What are we doing? Everything in the District of Columbia that has to do with, uh, people of color and poor people has been privatized. We privatized, um, mental health, and you see the problems that we're having there. Every cases that are getting court because of this privatization of the mental health agency. We privatized, um, alcohol and drug treatment, and we have all kinds of problems that have come into the scene for that. I am so concerned about these mothers and babies. I need to know, what are you going to do about privatizing our babies? We're staying, let's know the answer to the question.
I have a cousin, who had her first child, when she was 13 years old, if it was not for that program, she would never have become a half-baby's mother. She would have not become a half-baby's mother. It bothers me, more than bothers me, to pop out and run her office, right? I have seen the challenges that, in particular, the young mothers face. They come out of trauma, they have these children incredibly young, and they have no idea how to care. And this program has been one that's gotten a number of those mothers on the right track. Now, what I would say is that we need to ensure that that program does not become privatized. We need to ensure that the funding gets reallocated for that program, and reappropriated for that program, to ensure, most importantly in lobby, that these mothers need the training they need to assure that this cycle stops. And that program, and this program, helps to do that. We have a fantastic pre-K3 and pre-K4 program, we do not have a fantastic zero to three program. And the only way we're gonna stop this significant equity in this, uh, um, in, in what happens in this community, particularly as it relates to the prison pipeline, is just what we're talking about. This program has to be fully funded, I would say it needs to be funded at levels that it's never been funded at before. Much, much better.
Um, good evening, I'm Vanessa Dixon, a healthcare advocate, and I have exactly the same question as the other lady for me. But in addition to, um, the defunding of the D.C. Health, um, so I program, um, infant mortality, um, and having it privatized, my question is Reverend Nagley, regarding privatization. So many important, especially healthcare services, have been, are being privatized. The infant mortality program, D.C. General, um, drugs, the, um, mental health, um, program, all of which were being done by accountable D.C. government employees, and then those monies are given to private companies, we are paid more money to serve fewer people, and make a profit, and don't do as good a job, and a non-account.
I just wanna also recognize Vanessa Dixon, because we work very hard in terms of keeping open D.C. General, and she really very much will need organizing on that, so again, Vanessa's a good disease. But one of the things that we gotta recognize, even from that scenario, the whole tendency is, one, to downsize, to privatize, to make the issue more and more insignificant, uh, and basically to remove populations from your city. That's what happens when you don't serve your population, and those things go into the privatization, and in a sense, and, and, and they continue to move in that direction. And right now, where we are in this whole movement towards privatization, it is a statement of who belongs in D.C. and who shouldn't be in D.C. And they're very clear about that in terms of the services and the dismantling of programs, and the privatization of, 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 of healthy families, and, and other, other pieces like that. So what we're really facing, in a sense, are folks who say, well, we don't need to have any problems anymore. Why? Because the population is getting richer, and the population, uh, don't need those kinds of programs, and so therefore, we don't need to have them intact. That's what we gotta resist, we gotta take care of everybody, and all of our residents in this city.
Amen. Everyone, each and every. And, uh, I'm concerned, I'm a citizen of the District for 14 years now, and I'm concerned that our government, uh, mayor, and House of Lords, and the judicial system, always come up to governing in a way, uh, that includes the best interest and the benefit of the rest of us, everyone who lives in this city, uh, for the babies. Uh, but specifically, uh, related to the, uh, the theme of this, uh, forum, to racism, displacement, and, um, to what's the other one? Yeah, gentrification. Uh, do not, uh, that word, are really difficult to find, and it's from, it's from a period of time in history where human beings were treated like animals and less. And it should maybe be a part of our vocabulary, so. But I've been reading the budget, trying to be a big citizen and reading the budget for fiscal 15, uh, fiscal 15, and, uh, here's something I read, and this is in the section on the Office of State Security and Education, quote, quote. Uh, this is funds just for charter schools. And, uh, one of their four of them, one of them is a facility grant, and it's called City Building. And the purpose of it is to create joint education and neighborhood, uh, development initiatives that focus on community revitalization by strengthening public education for charter schools. And I just wondered if you have any, um, any, uh, thoughts on whether or not I might be a part of that, thank you.
All right, very quickly, we've got two more questions, and we're gonna represent the final statement from each candidate, close this down.
Okay, well, very quickly, I'm also, I'm just, I'm supposed to make it, but I'm still holding on. But that said, uh, I want to point out to you, right across the road, which I know missed out for 300 people in, uh, surely contracted... Schultz, we're 300 people in, Shirley Contract, which is part of Clark Construction, is ready to build a 2.2 million square foot, $1.3 billion project over 395, and you're not trying to hire any of the hundreds of homeless people right across the road that want to make this all the way to Lorton, which is beyond Metro, to apply for a job across the road in downtown DC. So my question then is this, what are you going to do to strengthen First Source Law to make sure that these people like Shirley Contract, can not live in all the way to Lorton to apply for a job across the road downtown DC, and fail to hire anybody from DC? What are you going to do to make sure that they, certain people, at the time that you know that the job's going to be available, to the money being available, you are right there, a DC resident, ready with your hard hat or whatever, to go to work? Okay, so how are you going to strengthen First Source Law to make them hire DC residents on these DC jobs?
My name is Bill Martin, I'm a recent, okay, and I'm a recently, which I'm a politician there, where politics is racial and racial and all those things. But I'm part of the, just part of the largest solar company in the country, and I'm home and asking you, what would politicians do to make Washington DC more great? Because I don't care what Shannon Adams says, or what the Gingrich says, or what Rush Limbaugh says, global warming is real, and we're going to be enduring our own support. So I'd like to know what, as politicians, you would do to help in that, most needed initiatives.
Hi, I'm Tanya Man, I'm listening up. I have a series of two questions, which one, teen homelessness, that we work forever listening up to, the second one is mental health homelessness, the third one is about mental challenged kids that should graduate out of school who don't know how to, that's enough.
All right, I'm the director of this, Mr. Jones, I wonder if you support the current plan to close the DC General, and if so, why, if not, why not, and what would you do to get it?
Well, really quickly, I'll probably invest in that for 30 seconds. I do not support the current plan, but I do think DC General needs to close because it is an abomination. I think the process in New York provides, close the plan, take little over $20 million and give it to developers, department buildings, put those to the far corners of the city, where you don't have natural access to access to their natural jobs, it's an abomination. What we need to do is make sure that we have access and availability throughout those more comprehensive areas parts of the city. You know Reverend Nagley, you talk all the time about where the poor white department of Washington DC is, I got a little secret, I'm going to tell you where it is. It's called the City Center Downtown, because all the affordable housing units at the City Center Downtown, they go to make sure, like, what the folks who don't know that, they must, you know what, they don't talk to us about that, they don't let us know that they have affordable housing units there, or 33rd and Wisconsin Avenue, they don't want to send those properties. So that's where the poor white folk are in DC, during 33rd and Northwest, they're at the City Center Downtown. We don't hear about it, we don't know about it, and the two out government that's in there are going to continue to have the problems we have now.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Bax, I'm going to make the entire. So you talked a little bit about homelessness, and I really wanted to point out, you know, the multi-dimensional issue that it is, and I really would like to hear how you all plan to galvanize, as you've talked about, and as you've been mentioning, the mental health issues, our government's, there are all the different agencies, the public health department, that should be involved in this issue of poverty, as well as housing, there are so many other issues, and we're not looking to lack of the power to galvanize some agencies. Thank you.
I'm going to answer your question. My name is Janet Ashford, I'm a board president, and I'm going to ask a very basic question. I'd like you to answer each of you with seven words or less, why I should vote for you.
All right, thank you very much.
I just want to ask, if this city is, who can very, very aggressively abolish very homes, we're trying to do without, every breath now by us fighting, if the city does approve it, what will you do as an adult, as councilwoman, to halt it, to stop it, or will you do anything?
My first question is what we're going to do, we're going to ask each of the candidates, in terms of questions that we're going to ask, if you ever answered any question, and then make those final statements, and I'll give you three minutes each, and we finish. You can, doesn't matter if you start, if you start down at the end, okay?
Houston, what young ladies' questions do you have for me? Because I'll finally make to school, in your statehood, those are my seven, for you today. And I guess now I've got a quick closing question. Let me tell you, as I started out, my name's Michael D. Brown, I've worked in politics for 35 years. You get two votes in this election, and I want you to think carefully about who you vote for. There's a lot of good people up here, and the choice is not easy, but let me tell you, I hope that you will make one of your choices, a choice for equality, a choice for someone who's worked through equal rights for the past eight years, because this city will never be what it should be until we are equal. We've struggled to this for 213 years, and we finally have an opportunity to make some headway. The President of the United States stood up for the principle of equality for DC residents, the United States Senate has stood up for it, and now is the time to push for it. But unfortunately, there's nobody on the City Council willing to do that. I want to get on the City Council, because that's what I want to do. I want to make the citizens of the district, for me, finally equal, by making the district a fifth and first state. And I hope you will consider using one of your votes for that purpose of equality. Now, let me just finish by saying that I've spent the last three months campaigning with the people on the stage, and like Mr. Pitt said, they're all very fine people. It's been an honor to be part of this group, each one of them, I believe, is dedicated to the right reason of being government, and that is to serve.
15 seconds.
Whatever choice you make, I'm sure you'll make a good choice, but I hope you'll consider your second choice for me. Thank you so much for inviting me.
You know, Robert White, and I want to thank everybody for taking the time to come tonight. You know, if there's one silver lining to the issue that we've seen on our council, is that voters have become more discerning. They want to look in the eyes of the folks running, in terms of their integrity, they're sincere. Because the reality is that 99% of the things that any of us would raise in the council are things that we don't see coming right now. And so what you have to know in your heart, is that the person who fills that seat is going to have your best interests in mind, not their own. I bring experience and integrity to this race. When I finished law school, became a bar attorney and clerk for years, instead of going into private practice, a position came open in Congresswoman Jordan's office to work for myself. So I anticipated I would make the private practice at much longer hours, but that's the way my heart goes, and so that's why I'm here. With what were very few hours left over, I founded and still serve as president of my civic association, so that not only could I work on the major issues in the legislation, statehood, community development, but that I could work on getting playgrounds, kids in my neighborhood, stop signs, so that my neighbors who are senior citizens don't have to feel the other lightness of justice crossing the street. I've dedicated my life to this city, because I love this city.
15 seconds.
I have the number bills, 535 members of a area voting Congress. I can get a bill passed at 13th number now. All the intentions in the world are not going to change the lives of the people who live. We need someone with a heart for service and a mind for politics. I uniquely bring that to this race, and I hope that you have one or two of our votes for me, Robert White. Thank you.
I'd like to say, I enjoyed myself this evening, talking to you, you know, the candidates here, we have the long election period, it's coming to an end, and I answered the young ladies' question with seven words, that I have your voice on the council, and that's most important. Now, I will answer a question, what ideas do they have? And me, in this board, and any other board, get the same response. We vote you in, we don't differ from you anymore. Yes, we vote you in, we try to call you, you don't return our questions. That is the answer that you need. Who's going to be there once they're in office, that's going to have your voice on the council? Who's going to take care of your interests on the council, is like, you know, you can't do it to the folks over there. Developers, come on, develop a situation, can you even realize the results of what you're going to do? And that's what you need. You know, we just, we need to go back to that same council, that first generation council members, that John Knowles and David Clarks, and what they call the city, charter city in one time. Because that's the way I came from civil rights struggle, March on Washington, Barry said, leave my seniors and my children alone. That's what I came from, and that's what I'm about. I've been in Washington DC all my life, worked over here, lived in Antioch, so I know the problems we have. My brother's on the police force, has a second blood on the fire department inspector, sister's ANC chair, excuse me, ANC commissioner in War Six, and my uncle, in with the terrorists, was the main force in closing the Capitol Generation, after it was polluting the air, conducting toxic waste inside the Capitol. My family has a law service, helps the city and residents, very special. My name is Calvin Burley, and I ask you for your vote. Just remember, to make your vote, I need a sense of person, thank you. Thank you very much, good night, gentlemen.
Again, I'm Reverend Ray Leonard Haggler, I'm number 14 on the ballot, and I do ask for one of your votes in this election. It's been very, very good to be here with this panel, particularly tonight, I think we've had a very, very robust and dynamic discussion. And so I thank every candidate that had the ability, had the courage to remain here all night. Some did not remain here, you know. I want to point out that some did not remain when we went towards center, and therefore can't remain when we're in order. Now, I give great credit to your brother, Michael Brown, who has been with us the whole time, the latter there, through the law, and has lived it up to this. And so we've got to give credit where credit is due, and so I give thanks for this panel that has had this rich discussion. You know, I was called by Courtman Malloy, the outside, a few weeks ago, in a column that he wrote. He said that there was three people in the race, as he could discern, there was Rita Barnes, there was the person who wasn't that seat, and then there was me. And they said the question comes down, and number two was between the insider or the outsider. I'm glad to be an outsider. I've been an outsider all my life. Justice is always an issue that comes from the outside. When you start advocating for people against the status quo, that's always an outsider's issue. And we need some outsiders on the City Council, because maybe if we have some outsiders on the City Council, the debate will not be about what least automobile somebody is going to drive, or whether somebody has a decent and adequate roof over their head. Maybe it'll be about somebody having a job in which they can grow and mature and raise a family. You know, the fact is, is that what we have done, our City Council has become a place of transactional business. And what I mean by that is that we're celebrating 40 years of living in home, 40 years that came out of the civil rights movement. And the beginning of our City Council was transformative, because it opened up fair housing, and opened up the ability to vote and participate, and it opened up a middle class, and somewhere along the line, that City Council had lost its focus, and sisters and brothers, we need to bring that focus back. You know, one of the things I'm advocating is not to legislate from the top down, because I, you know, but from the bottom up, because you know what you need, you know where you live, and you know what the issues are about. And that's my job on the council, is to be your advocate, to stand up and be your advocate and do what is necessary to get your agenda through, to be able to continue to organize, because no matter which one of us go to that council, there's still one vote out of 13. And if we don't believe that we have to fight for what's right, then we are obviously critical. Because we're going to have to fight the status quo, we're going to have to fight the business as usual, we're going to have to fight the lobbyists, we're going to have to fight the gentrifiers, we're going to have to fight everybody that comes in and has a sense of entitlement over those who have lived in the community all this time. You know, it is time that we fight to do what's right, we fight for the right thing, which is always an agenda of justice. I've been organizing for 40 years, and been working 23 years in DC, and people will tell you what they will do, just look at my record, and you can see all the many things I've already done. Thank you very much.
So when I initially got into this race, there were a lot of people telling me who I had to be and how I had to talk to make this work. And you know what I was advocating? That I'm just going to do what people, and I'm going to be honest, and I'm saying what I really think. And if that works out for me, and people think I should be on the council, then so be it. And if I can just change the discussion, change how all of these candidates talk about the issues that are so important to our community, and the things that I think are so important to the dialogue, then I've already won. That doesn't mean I don't want to be on the council. Right? So look, let me tell you about me. I'm a six-generation Washington woman, you know that. My father started his life in paradise. His mother and father worked very hard to buy a house at 13th and Kennedy. My father had a little talent in football, and he went on to play professional football and is now president of the local NFL Players Association. And let me tell you, my dad and my mother could talk their life. But one of the things my dad taught me is that you are only as strong as your team. You're only as strong as your team. And let me tell you about the person who guides my team. Now, you're going to laugh, because he's bad. But let me tell you about that guy, my boy. When he came into my life at 18 months, my life changed. How I perceive government and its responsibility to our people changed. Everything became more real. I know the mothers in particular, parents do, but the mothers in particular understand what I'm talking about. That little boy changed me, and here's what I know, there is no child in this city that deserves to grow up in poverty and squander. There is no parent in America, and certainly no parent in the District of Columbia, who doesn't want that absolute best for their children. Government's responsibility is to ensure that they have the tools to be successful. Government's responsibility is to ensure that they have the resources to be successful. Now, a lot of people are going to talk about a whole bunch of programs, a lot of people are going to talk about a whole bunch of pieces of legislation, and we've been together for four solid months, talking to each other, and all of the voters around the city. At this point, many of our answers have kind of collapsed into the same thing. So what you need to know is what drives us, what motivates us, what makes us, what wakes us up in the morning, and what pushes us to make the best decisions. And here's what you need to know about me, I am a mother of first, and I have a ton of experience. I have walked the halls of Congress and the Wilson Building, passing policy that positively impacted the city for 15 years. Now, I'm not going to tell you, because the Washington Post endorsement is the most important thing, but they did endorse me first, they listed me first, they picked me first, and you know my legacy? Because I started exactly where I started this discussion, because I was me. I was the person who said, well, some people aren't ready to say. I am ready for this seat, because I'm going to mention that every single child can succeed in this city. And the lucky thing is I have the policy experience and the know-how to make it happen. I need your vote on November 4, or before, if you vote early. I'm number seven on the ballot, and since we're in a church, I will tell you, that is a number of completion, and you know what that means.
Well, first and foremost, I really just want to thank everybody, I mean, I think that we did have a very robust discussion, and it should get a little hot, because these issues are controversial. Briefly, excellent question, we don't talk about the environment, two things we need to do really fast. One, we need to have the incentives for people who own rental properties to put solar panels at house, not just people who own them, and priority curmudgeon, like the app in San Francisco, where we priority curmudgeon, like the app in San Francisco, so if you build a lead goal, you jump to the front of the line, which encourages you to build one, the same as building the next. Two, quick choices. And as to your question, Scott, that's a great question, because if it passes through the city, and I'm on the council, and
the city, and I'm on the council, that means it's already passed over what I have tried to do. So all I can do is be down there with you, wherever we got to go, you know, Stevens Road, wherever it is, and I'll stand in front of the bulldozer, they're going to have to drag you up. And that's basically what my closing is about, because I don't just back things because they're expedient, I'm not the type, I'll be the first one who've been, I'm not really the type of guy who makes a lot of deals. That's not what I want to go to the council for. I back things because they're right. And when something is right, that's when you stick with it to the bitter end, win, lose, or draw. And I think one of the problems we have on the council today are that too many people who are on the council, who as soon as the going gets tough, look for the first deal that they can cut, because they can release a press release and say how much I care about poor people. I'm not going to stand up here and tell you that I care about poor people. I am poor. I'm the only person here who doesn't pay taxes. I get the earnings from tax breaks, because I don't make enough money. I couldn't even live in DC if I didn't have a roommate who was one of my best friends, who was willing to let me slide sometimes and every month, because I don't have what it is. I got a hole in the bottom of my right shoe right now, because I can't afford to get it. And part of the problem that we have in DC is we always look for somebody else to represent us, instead of saying, how do we represent ourselves? We have to try to represent ourselves. I agree, there are many people on this panel. If you like more than two, then why don't you recall one of these politicians that you voted for? You have to stop being so passive, and take our destiny into our own hands. Every positive thing that's ever happened in this nation, in this world, is not because people do what is practical and fair, because they push up against the bounds of what is possible, and create a new reality, and show people there's a new way to live. If they've done it before, we can do it again. And what we do here in DC, we'll inspire people all around this country, and we will be able to roll back those same forces that are in DC and around this country, pulling people down, just because of how much money you make, or what color your skin is. So my name is Eugene Perrier. I'm a statehood brief candidate, so we'll say SGG after my name, and it's number six on the ballot. I'm at eugeneperrier.com. And as you can tell, I like to talk, so call me at 202-556-1651, and we can talk about how we can win this election and start taking DC back. Now, first of all, I'm going to answer the question. Because I am a bridge builder in a promise land. And just because I started the first debate, whatever gave me that vote again, because my fellow candidates, they don't need, I don't need to quote. The first job of a leader is to define reality. I've done that for you tonight. The last is to say thank you, and all the times a leader is disturbed. All I talk about is service. I know the reality, but as I said, I was born in a private hospital, my mother was there, her only was born in a private hospital. Her mother was one of the first babies born in a private hospital. And unfortunately, my great-grandmother wasn't born in a private hospital. For those who've been in the city for a while though, my great-grandmother was born in one private hospital, for a pretty long age. My mother's raised from River Terrace. My aunt Joy Andrew is currently in the ANC, the home that she was raised in. She's my grandmother's aunt and sister, one of the few that are left. You ask why I'm not a member? Because when I stepped outside of Main Street, my neighbors don't look to the council member who lives a block away from the moms. They come to me. When the young guys in the block need a job, who are returning citizens, who are dropped out of high school, when they get screwed up, they come to this to eat. When they need water, because DC water was going to cut the water off, and the older folks, they know what to do. Those of me in my right, we loaded them out of a little truck, went to Costco six times, and we loaded gallons of water in the back of our truck, and taking the money out of our pocket, because I was ready to see that's what I was supposed to do. Every time it snows, me and one other young guy who I helped get a job three years ago, who lives twelve hours a day, and worked out in this shelter in the snow, ground a tarot lot. Not because we have to, because we're supposed to. I'm running because I'm tired of fulfilling a conviction on the DC city council. The reality is, I'm going to shock you all. You've heard how I talked about it. The first endorsement I got was a DC Chamber of Commerce. You ain't never heard a business person talk like me. You ain't going to never hear a business person talk like me. I'm undergrads at Morehouse College. You know, Reverend Wilson, going to stop and break my tradition and say thank you, because I know you won't give your whole opinion. And as a Morehouse man, and as a son and grandson and nephew, preacher and teacher for years along the way, I know if you go in your whole opinion, I'm supposed to say thank you. So I'm going to say thank you. When I started my campaign, I asked two folks to be my co-chinups. The first, the great lady by the name of Faye Gibson, Faye is a head of the Morehouse Council on Education. I said, Faye, I don't want you to be a political activist. I don't want you to be a political activist, because you're a great person, because I know you're lovely. I want you, because education is the most important thing to our city. And if I don't have an education person going to lead me, I'm going to fail. The first who runs my campaign, Erica Harrell, is a former teacher and now is a youth advocate. My wife, who's not here right now, because she's studying, finished her second master degree at American University, is works for education non-profit that gets paid to. My other co-cast is a guy by the name of Dr., well, Reverend Dr., as I say, Paul J. Salat Castell, Torstree Christian Church. Because I know for a fact, if I'm not blessed, and I've not done things the right way, I can't do anything at all. And if I tell the folks, you're going on November fourth, I would love your vote. But no matter what, I'm going to win anyway, because I'm here doing what I'm supposed to do. I'm here doing what I'm going to do, because it's been preordained, and I don't care what anybody else is. I'm here to be a positive here. Lastly, I'm going to say thank you as my co-chinups. I want to thank my fellow candidates. It's been an honor, a privilege, and a blessing to spend the last five hours with you all. The good times, the bad times, I'm better for it, I love you all dearly. And lastly, thank you to you all for being here. This is the best debate that we've had all year, and I think I appreciate it. I wish all of you a life that is not a run, or anything more to value than you, because I love you all dearly. Be blessed, have a wonderful, thank you very much.
This completes this debate tonight, but it does complete the struggle against racism and gender discrimination. And we will see, obviously, that while the struggle continues, thank all of these candidates. Give them another hand or two. And thank you all for coming.